Samuel.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Again, welcome to our regular meeting of December twelfth. Please join for the pledge. Pledge allegiance. And to the Republic which it stands. All right. There's a bunch on the agenda. I know Bobby Joe's not here, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we'll just start right off. We do have Mike and Janice here, but any public input? Are you guys here for the EDC? We're gonna make sure that's on the end to end here. Also, I I'll make a quick motion that we add to our agenda, and it's a regular meeting, our transfers for this year. We're kind of doing this early. Brad feels that nothing's gonna change, and he just wants to be ready for the auditors. Okay, so I made a motion to add this. Do I have a second?
I'll take your motion.
Okay, any discussion about adding that to our agenda? Great, thanks. First thing is election of officers. I'd accept the motion. For for Chair, let's do Chair first.
I'm in eight, Nick Owens.
Second motion.
Okay, is there any other nominations? We're all good, all in favor? All right, thank you, everyone. Vice Chair, I'd like to.
Was there any, anybody against the motion?
Unless you wanted to speak against it. I did check, I did check the the flavor of the room, so I appreciate it. I'd accept the motion for Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion that we elect Cynthia McCarthy Dale to be the Vice Chairman.
Okay, all right. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, so we have four and against it. Okay, and one abstention.
Who's abstained?
No. Dee, did you vote? Did you vote?
I voted against, I didn't abstain.
Okay, against it, so so four to two, okay. Thank you, everyone. All right, consideration of the Board of Finance meeting. The next year's meeting dates. I'm sure Mary has that in her.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
No, we're on the date, Sean.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the dates for our regular scheduled meetings for twenty-three, twenty-four. Twenty-four, sorry.
Twenty-four.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, any discussions? Anybody see a date that is not good? I know Valentine's Day, I purposely wanted to see Brad on Valentine's Day, but no, we scheduled something else on Valentine's Day.
You got my birthday, July ninth.
Boy, make sure everybody writes that down. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the dates. All in favor on the dates for next year? Aye, the record show unanimous. Uh, let's see here. Consideration, um, do we not do the minutes, I'm sorry?
No, we didn't do the minutes yet, so.
Well, we're on the minutes now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, everybody has the regular schedule minutes from November fourteenth. Does everybody have time to read them, or is anybody absent? Any discussions on that? I'd accept the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our Board of Finance meeting on November fourteenth.
We have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion on the fourteenth minutes? I'll try, everybody, everybody in favor of the minutes of the fourteenth of November? Oh, did you have something?
Oh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dee was there, John, are you good? All right, all right, so we're moving around along. This here is a vehicle that came.
We had other minutes too. Why do I have one?
Man, multiple copies of the same.
May I explain with your pass?
That's a select for selectmen.
Oh, I see. I just glanced, sorry. The Board of Selectment Minutes where it was discussed about the EDC.
Exactly.
Right, right. And also the two cars, so I just highlighted. Very good.
Yep, all right, so the Board of Finance, again, they just voted on him, and that's why she gave it to us. It's the same logo there, you know, besides the Board of Selectment.
Oh, let me circle that for my.
Okay, um, the first one, this was a vehicle that Park and Rec has now. Um, it was bought on a lease. I'm against buying a vehicle on a lease, but it was done in the past administration, so it's off of a three-year lease. I did ta- talk to Rachel today. And the vehicle's in great shape. It's got plenty of life left in it, and I I would be in favor of purchasing that, okay? Um, that's a Tacoma, I'm sorry. Brad, how many miles are on the the RAV four, that Toyota thing?
Not sure how many miles. I know it's under, it's the first selectment vehicle, so.
Right, and that was off a lease also?
Yeah, they're both leases. Usually we do thirty-nine month lease, for whatever reason, they're a little bit cheaper.
Right, right.
However, the map works out. Um, but yeah, they're both under mileage. Um, they would have been, I think, twelve thousand mile leases, and I I thought they had to be, but um, they're well under thirty-six.
Right, right, plenty of life left in them, right, exactly. Um, again, the the Park and Rec would keep the Tacoma, it's a silver one, Fesh always drives it, and it's in garbage and stuff. Um, but the the plan, if everybody's okay with with the first selectment cars coming off a lease. And in the twenty-four plan for the for, I'm sorry, Building Department, was scheduled to get a car.
So in the, he had put it on his last year, and I had him push it to twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, purchased to replace the two thousand seven Chevy Trailblazer. So the plan right now, if this goes through, is most likely to replace, take that off the capital plan at thirty-five thousand dollars. And replace the two thousand seven Chevy Trailblazer. Still runs, it's beat up, it's sixteen years old. Um, mileage usually aren't the issue for our cars because they stay in town, or they just rust and everything else.
What are the years for these models?
So the Tacoma and the RAV four are both two thousand ones, I believe.
Three-year leases, right, I imagine, so.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
That's one, two thousand twenty-one.
Really, twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah. The time, because we picked them up late of twenty, I think they're twenty-one.
Nick, this is paid for on capital loan recurring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That bucket's getting smaller.
Yeah, I believe they're both twenty-twenty-ones, because the Equinox that we bought recently was a twenty-one.
So that's the gist of it, you know, so, yeah.
I'm a little confused. I I got where the Tacoma was, but where does the Toyota RAV four been?
It was first selectmen vehicle.
Oh, that's, the first selectman was a RAV four?
Yeah.
So that, and then that's gonna go where once we buy it?
So, when we buy it, assuming that the purchase of the Chevy Trailblazer, which is next, goes through. The Chevy Trailblazer will go to the first selectman when it comes in. It's going in production in the coming week, so we won't see it for a couple of months. So when that vehicle comes in, in theory, given what we know now, it would go to replace the two thousand seven Chevy Trailblazer in building inspection.
Okay. And they had, Brad had pushed them off for a year, and they're coming up with a thirty-five thousand dollar vehicle.
Yeah, and the, the, a building official right now uses our own, we have one other lease vehicle, and that comes up in July. So well, the plan will be to buy that out at eighteen, so they'll have two three-year-old vehicles.
Secondary.
And then they have a third vehicle, because there's three building inspections. It's an old police car. I think it's like a twenty-fifteen. Um, it was one of the better ones. But if you look at it, it runs and it runs nice, but the guts in the middle council are ripped out because it's a police vehicle. Um, so, the two thousand seven, we probably wouldn't get rid of, and we would keep it as a flycar in case we needed to, until, we keep these things till they fall apart. And then we try to sell them at auction, and we get like three hundred bucks.
Right. Okay, and I'm sorry, is it a Traverse or a Trailblazer?
So, the.
Trailblazer that's.
The, the old car's a Trailblazer, the new vehicle that proposed in the next line for the thirty-six oh one is a Traverse.
Right, to replace the first selectmen vehicle.
And the plan would then, in theory, when that's up, pass that one down. And keep the first selectman in a newer vehicle, because he's the one most likely to go out of town with it if he's up in Hartford or whatever he's doing. Um, so.
But our plan is to purchase that, not lease it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, and then we did really well with leases for a long time, because the rates on them were so low. Rates are high now, it makes a ton of sense just to buy them.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is generally your process for auctioning off the cars? Because if you remember, we had a bit of a pileup several years ago.
Yeah, so.
It was like seventeen vehicles, and I just don't want to be paying registration and insurance.
So we don't pay registration, our insurance is all pooled on the vehicles, and it's based on, and yeah, we don't, so. We do an auction about once a year.
Okay.
So, we, our purchasing agent will send that email out, what does everybody have to get rid of?
Okay.
But.
But explain that pool of insurance, if you have twenty cars or twenty-one cars, you're saying if we add cars, it doesn't.
It's all the, like, the value of all the cars, it's not like you adding a car to your house is a bigger difference than us adding a car to our pool.
But if you have seventeen junk cars, which I know you don't have now, that would be.
Correct.
A large, yeah.
Okay, so.
So.
Any other discussion on that, John?
So you want one motion? We could do one motion.
Yeah, I think we can, in the C N R.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the buying out of two leases. For with the two different vehicles being stated, the Toyota RAV four in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred and three, and the Toyota Tacoma in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per total of forty-nine thousand eight hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred eighty-three dollars.
And a C N R.
And take that out of the C N R account.
I'm gonna second John's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second and a discussion on the cars, the two lease cars that were taken off there?
Um, just one last thing, the, right now, both of these are on the operating budget for lease payments.
Yes.
So when we get into the budget for, in February, when we start meeting on the budget, in the contract that services line for building inspection and first selectmen, it will go down.
We're roughly around six thousand each, each budget.
The first selectmen I know is forty-six hundred bucks in the budget, and it's.
They'll take five thousand out of each department.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
All in favor on John's and Will's motion? The record show unanimous. All right, consideration of a new Chevy Traverse, and this would be for the first selectmen's car that we're moving around. Um, this seems like a really good price. Does it have backseats in this car?
So, uh, MSRP on it, I think it's forty-three.
Yeah.
Um, and when I was talking to Nick about it, I'm like, well, nobody pays MSRP, and then I would caught myself, because now you do right now.
Yeah, a lot of people.
You know, um, so by the, get it for six to seven grand off MSRP, that's why we're moving on it now.
And I think, what do you call one, Todd wanted to see a Chevy in the, in B L one, or?
Well, I think, wanted to go back to American brand, um, so I think we got a little extra push and push a little, we'll buy American.
Great. All right, any other questions about the purchase of this? Does someone like to make a motion? Bob, come on.
I'll make a motion that.
That's gonna make more motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of capital non-recurring of a two thousand twenty-three Chevy Traverse in the amount of thirty-six thousand and eleven dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second and a discussion on the new Traverse? All in favor? I'm sorry?
Is it a hybrid?
It is not.
Darn.
Yeah. All right, all in favor? Are you a no, Dee, or no?
Yes.
Okay, all right, the record show unanimous. All right, um, we're almost to the end. Let's do the, let's do the the park. We know we have Janice and Mike here. Um, they came to us probably over a month ago already, so if you want to just maybe speak of it a little bit, I guess?
Sure. Basically, we are asking, and we've had some prior discussion with Nick and the Board Selectmen passed last week. Uh, funds coming out of the profits of the sales, uh, to cover the ongoing maintenance of the park for the course of the next seventeen years. So, that's an item that would not ever, in anyone in this room, that's all, ever have to hear about a request upon the support for our park, and the detail is in the motion very specifically. It includes, you know, the cutting and the trees and the brush and the landscaping, and the signs, and the maintenance, and so, and retention fund. And, um, we did review those figures, uh, with Bob Dibble to get his view, he thought they were very much in line. We had previously gone out the bid, so we know, you know, oversight-wise, um, in terms of how the park's being taken care of right now. And I think it's a, from from EDC's perspective, we had a unanimous vote, the same with Board of Selectmen. Uh, I think it's a prudent investment, given the profit we're making off of the sale of lots, which right now, based on two lots that were already closed, we received the catch. Um, and after we have retired the town debt, uh, and with the three lots sold, we're looking at an approximate eight hundred thousand dollar profit, I'm just rounding, okay? And, um, you know, so that that we forget about all the tax benefit of the structure, everything that's gonna come more of that. And then once the other, the fourth lot is sold, we would have a net profit that should be in the one point one that area in terms of for the town. So, taking three hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred thirteen dollars, whatever. All right, um, would be a way to maintain the park to the standard that we have. All of us collectively as a town raised it to, and, um, uh, I think we'd all sleep better knowing that our town drew was being well-maintained.
Uh, when, when, when the guys came to us, um, again, there was a fund set up when this thing was built. And I was in favor right off the bat, just because, you know, this is not found money by any means. But we can fund this park for the maintenance and actually not have it on the taxpayers every year. So that's the only reason I was in favor of it, that this fund can be set up, and actually, they can draw off it for specific reasons. And then we don't need to keep coming back to the taxpayers each year, so.
I have a question.
Yes, of course, please.
Um, two things, one is, uh, how does that break down per year? Do you know, I mean, are we all gonna be dead when it's gone?
I mean, uh, there's a couple, there's a couple of variables, and the dollar amount is not a variable. Um, we're basically presuming, uh, we currently cost us fifteen thousand dollars, but it's gonna go up a little bit because of the extra property and the extra lots and the retention fund that doesn't exist, well, now it does. And, um, we're also asking to have that in an interest-bearing account. So that this way, we can accrue that interest over time. So when we start at fifteen thousand now, once it's all said and done, if that goes up a couple of thousand dollars, we're factoring in about a five percent increase per year.
Okay, just just a ballpark then, of just how much a year, eighteen thousand, twenty thousand?
It could be eighteen, we won't know until we go out the bid for the new section of the park. We know that right now, we're paying fifteen thousand.
Okay, that's, that's close enough for me, I mean, I've been, you know.
And then you built in with a five percent increase for the landscape, however it's gonna be doing the work, and that's typical in the trade.
And, you know, the returns we get on the interest-bearing account, right now, we could get five percent, you know, for three years and out, who knows?
The other question I wanted to know was, I just recall, I don't know how many years ago it was, but do the tenants have any input in this and how, and what's being done, or how it's, there was a time when the EDC was, you know, in charge of the maintenance and the landscaping, and then the tenants somehow didn't want that in.
No, that, that.
Well, what, what was that story then?
I was here.
Tell me that story then.
So the story back in that time was that the, the, when we originally built, developed the park, this is before my time. We had funding from the state, and with funding from the state, we had to install certain sets of rules, both from the state and then also, um, at the time, P and Z, in terms of regulations and rules. EDC oversaw that, as EDC oversaw the selling of the original lots that were sold in the park. So with that was regulations about how long you have, you know, order to build, which we actually do have on the lots now, like, what we don't want is speculators, so there were rules that were put into place that became dated for the current status of the park, because keep in mind, when the rules were expired, okay? The town never, no one ever actually took the rules away, they just expired, because we had our.
Well, the grant ran out, you stopped, you stopped getting the money.
No, 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 no.
You're talking about the right here, right, right.
There, 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 there was no ongoing money.
Oh, I thought you were regulations from the state who gave you the grant, that's what I thought you were saying.
No.
It was from the sale of the properties.
From the sale of the properties, we, we were, and the investment that the state made originally to develop the property, we had to live with certain rules and regulations for the ongoing support of the property, so the monies that we had left could only be used for Clark Park. The regulations is a separate entity, those expired after thirty years, th- those had to drop that day. So we looked at revising the rules, but, um, and it wasn't the tenants. It was the residents, because it's, it's not a, the tenants don't have a right to vote, unless they're a resident.
Right, or a property owner. If they own the property, I understand what you're saying, they're not residents, they're property owners, they own the buildings.
It wasn't an issue, it wasn't, there was a couple of tenants that expressed concern about it, but the ninety-five percent of the people had no care one way or the other. So at the time, there were property owners that attended the meeting, and but, you know, a couple of votes, the rules were not renewed with the changes. Fine, then it falls under the the P and Z exclusively from the standpoint of building and expansions and so forth, just like with the lots that we had. But that didn't stop our mission of continuing to develop park and to take advantage on behalf of the town, and so far, it's looks like it's going that way.
I might be not following you, but what about, what are the regulations and rules that expired that were precluding? Was it precluding development, or were there rare specific?
I mean, it's, I mean, we could get your copy.
I don't, I don't even copy, I just thought.
Probably fifty, sixty pages long. Um, and th- these were rules that we inherited, because this was going back thirty years when they first came out. But it, they had things such as the town early on, just like we would be today. We don't want to have, we want to turn that into a tax-producing, successful business operation in each and every lot, okay? So, with, the fear was going back into the early days, is people buying up lots to speculate.
I understand.
So, there were rules that said, you have a lot, you have to do this in a certain period of time, or the town has the right to come back and revoke the sale. Things like that.
Okay, so now you have no rules and regulations?
No, we do, no, on the current lots that we're selling, we do have those types of things in the mix, meaning.
No speculating.
No speculating.
I understand. Okay.
All right, I, I just want to make a statement. We all know that time flies when we're having fun.
Oh, shit.
And I've been on this board for eight years, so it's been a lot of fun, time flies. I forget when the two of you first came in front of this board, but it was early in my tenure. And I actually went back in the old notes, and you two projected what would be a possible outcome of the sale of these properties, and you were almost spot on, it actually came out. So I think you two deserve a tremendous amount of credit. And remember, at the time, there was some negativity floating around in the town about what your efforts were, and maybe even to the a degree of what your character was, I thought that that was inappropriate then. And now with the benefit of seeing the end of the story that you all came here with, being spot on to what you told us it was going to be. Again, I just want to congratulate you for being fantastic financial planners, doing great jobs for the city, for the town, excuse me, in light of some folks who were in town and being disbelievers. So, Mike, Janice, thank you very much, I.
Thank you, Mike.
This has been tremendous fun watching you guys do your job and do a fantastic job.
Well, Nick and I ate our humble.
Oh, definitely, I never thought it was gonna be this quick.
No.
Never.
We were non-believers.
You know, it's incredible.
But now we believe.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank God you didn't finish up with a buck.
Yeah. And does anybody else?
Can I ask maybe the same, the same question Cynthia had, but I'm gonna ask it a different way, because I didn't really understand. So, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but what stuck out is seventeen years, right? So just tell me how we, we needed this to get the seventeen years. I know it's fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, let me, let me ask the question a couple of ways. So we've been spending fifteen thousand for the last five years on the park?
No, it's.
Per year?
Probably, let's say fifteen, the past year is a solid fifteen thousand, yes.
Okay, so, but this, this, this fund, we're gonna call it a fund, because you're gonna put it somewhere, is gonna create whatever the percentage, but if you go out seventeen years spending fifteen thousand, I know it's not gonna be fifteen thousand per hour, it's two hundred and fifty thousand or fifty-five thousand. How did you get to that dollar amount and then put it, you know, so many years on that?
It's, you're compounding the fifteen thousand each year at five percent interest.
No, I get it, so, so that's, that's exact, so you're doing fifteen thousand times five percent, and that gets you to the three sixty-two in seventeen years.
Correct.
And I think you said like also.
There's other, there's other, I specifically identified, uh, I mean, here's the way, and this is why we wrote the motion in the way it is, whether it's sixteen and a half years, twenty-four and a half years, all we know is that the only use of the money is to take care of the park.
But maintenance the park, no improvements.
No, maintenance.
Well, over the hair is maybe.
For the signs, just to make, you know, if the sign breaks, you gotta fix it, you know what I'm saying, we're not gonna look for, basically, the money is to, is.
Upkeep of the park.
Upkeep of the park, and the motion, which, uh, Nick, you have, I gave, it's, it's like Marty Lola wrote the mo- the motion to be so specific.
It's gotta be good.
Okay, all right, it's, it's very specific, because this is what, you know, here's the thing we know. Ten years from now, I doubt any of us are gonna be in this room.
I know I will be.
Okay, all right, so I don't know who's gonna sit in our seats behind us. I don't want to have somebody tempted from now, down the road, say, oh, you know, tough times, we need to grab that money.
Oh, absolutely.
No, it's a restricted account, I don't think that.
Well, but, you know what, it's just like, it's, that's why it's as black and white as we can make it, in saying, hey, we, we're, two things have happened, we've done a good thing for the town, because we're gonna be able to deliver, you know, right now, eight hundred thousand, uh, if, if you took the three sixty asset you had for, and then you have the other lot, you know, so I mean, th- there's, there's no downside, and it's just, the thing is, right now, one way or the other, the town's been paying for the current upkeep of the park, so.
It's under whose purview though? I mean, do you, are you the one who goes across?
And it's defined in the motion.
All right.
Yeah, very defined.
Yes, yeah, given your projection accuracy, or I think just owe it to you, you know, believe that this is gonna be the right number. Now, to your point, if it's not, all right, we get a little bit less maintenance, or we get a little bit more maintenance.
Right.
But maintenance is defined, so.
I mean, there's, there's, the only, I mean, what, you, I know Nick, and I spoke about, I know Brad. I know you may, you may have some reservations, but.
We're gonna talk about that in a second here.
You know, in terms of the interest-bearing account, um, and then also the loose end that you have with the chargebacks, which I know you guys are figuring it out, so that's got nothing to do, I just wanna have.
This is not in the motion what I'm asking, um, just that, is it, I mean, how many people are in the commission, like? Seven?
Seven.
And so, I'm just, I'm just curious about the method of communication, does the owner call you up, do you go and see, I mean, I got a broken side, or there's, the road's gonna all.
Well, this, this, this here is all our town.
Just common space.
The town owns all of that.
If if their road front i- is their grass, they take care of.
I understand that.
This is all just our common that doesn't have a building lot in front of it.
Are you gonna drive around the park and look for holes uh in common areas? That's the thing I'm wondering, cause someone, there's a department here, there's a department there.
Yeah, and the biggest thing is, is the. Exactly, and and Park and Rec, you used to do some of it, the highway department, but now this is actually setting up to pay private contractors.
Know about the paying part. I'm just asking about the management part. It's just out of curiosity.
Right now, it's it's overseen by E D C.
Right.
So it will continue to be overseen by E D C.
So when the grass is high or there's brush coming into the road, the E D C says, hey, why is this not being done? And they make sure it gets stopped.
Because they go out in a bus, all of them. Business. That's great. So that answers my question.
Okay, true.
Thank you.
So Brad, um. This is not, this motion does not talk about being put in a fund, an interest-bearing fund. So can you speak of that a little bit?
So there is um. Typically, they used to have a, let me back up. There's still, I think there's still existing cash account that, uh I don't know if it's interest-bearing or not. I'd have to go back and look to the bank. That, once the F J Clark Fund thirteen, F J Clark's went negative with how much money they had. Um that they owe the town more than they had in cash. We eventually took that cash and goes, well, you owe us money, so we're gonna take that cash. So they have zero cash on hand. In theory, we could either put on the books and say, here's an I O U for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Or we could physically transfer the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the, to the bank account. It really doesn't matter to me typically. You know, I fight for the general fund. And I oversee all of it, all the funds of the town, but the general fund is what drives our tax base. Typically, I don't like to give away revenue.
I understand, so but how? If if we're guaranteeing three sixty-two to go to maintenance and it's in a general fund, what stops the money being spent in other ways?
It's still, it's still. As the. It's earmarked, it's, it would be reserved. It wouldn't be in our fund balance anymore. The only thing, physically, the cash would be in our account. But on paper, it's earmarked, it's not in our fund balance anymore.
Okay, again, maybe it's to the question, but so the five percent.
It not happen that way.
It wouldn't happen that way. There would be no growth in the, in that money.
Correct. But this board says that they want. When it comes time to transfer that money, which there's still other steps after the Board of Finance for that. Says that we believe that we'd like to just set them up, put the money there, and maybe for the next couple of years. The interest rates will be enough to pay for it and they'll just extend it out.
That was the idea, right? Yeah, so could it not be set up like the C N R, like an account? An interest-bearing account.
But even like the C N R, all that much.
I know it sits in the budget.
It's just revenue. Big pie thing and we get revenue from it.
I was thinking the same thing. It would be like C N R. Where we set up a fund.
Yeah.
It has a, it has a balance like this, three hundred and sixty-two, four seventy-eight. The cash sits somewhere else. Cruise interest to the benefit of the general fund. But when we go to fund, put money to the fund itself, we just take it out of. That cash and put it into the fund. So in a way, I I think, I'm thinking about it correctly, it's gonna operate very similar to. Other funds that we have that have a stated amount. That get funded. If they're pre-funded, the cash stays in the general fund and that interest accrues to the benefit of the town like you were saying.
Yeah, that's like how C N R is set up right now.
And so that's what I thought this.
But that's, that's, their request is not that. Their request is to physically hold the money in a different bank account. And that they.
From the increase with the, with this interest.
The C N R account is not a separate bank account anymore. So any interest that that money, the million dollars or so that C N R has on hand. What's more than that, cause you unallocated for the million three. So the one point nine million dollars, it's C N R cash. Any interest that that gains goes into the general fund.
I I could have misread, likely maybe I did misread the Board of Select minutes. Certainly is clear that might mean a suggestion to the Board of Selectment, that it be an interest-bearing account, but it looks like the first. First elect's motion doesn't talk about.
Correct. When I spoke to Dan outside of the Board of Selectmen meeting, he said, to me, that's the Board of Finance. And it is, because that affects revenue in the general.
So look, I I'm a big proponent of simplicity and and kinda copying prior. Good practices. So I was assuming this was just going to be run like capital now, we're current, we'll set up a fund. We've got a bunch of funds, right? We'll set up a fund, it'll get funded to the extent of the three sixty, six, four, seventy-eight, and we'll just transfer money when it's.
That to me is the easiest way to oversee it and to, you know, account for it.
Well, except there's never an advantage of maybe a higher interest yield and then going from seven, year seventeen to maybe twenty-one.
Well, with that benefit, John, it's gonna go to the general.
No, I know, but you're still gonna get. Worry about trying to fund the 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 park.
Well, maybe in twenty-five years.
Well, until Mike's point, God willing, from his lips to God's ears, I won't be here, but yeah, it'll be a different Board of Finance.
Yeah, they'll figure it out. I I I would, um I that's what I was thinking. It was gonna be a separate.
I bet you don't get the seventeen years out of it. If you, if you take the three sixty and you start burning at fifteen plus five percent every year. Which I think is a reasonable number. I don't think you're gonna be at the year seventeen to have money in the account. The number's there, but it's, there's no.
Um, let's just say that if we had. Uh interest rate over compounded, keep in mind, power com- compounding. Is that uh we might be able to stretch it out for a couple more years, be it two, three, four years. If we don't have anything, then we could be.
Three years short.
We could be a little bit short, but you know, I mean, all of which would not be anyone in this room's problem. I'm just. Putting on my uh private enterprise hat and saying. This is, if you're gonna lock that money up, take advantage of every ounce of that money and if we can get, now, it's going to the general fund.
We're still gonna get the.
I know we're gonna get the interest, but it's not, you know, it's, 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 if that's the only way you can do it, then you can't do it. I mean, it's, that's government.
It's not the only way, but my concern, my gut feeling, just from, you know, where I come from, is that. I I feel uncomfortable, like it it's all says it, okay, that's like another, it's not even part of the town anymore, because. We're not gonna ever see it. Like, of course, you know, if the cost would have cost, but you know, it should be filtered through like everything, like every town expense. So it it could be set up as a separate fund. I don't know.
It already is a separate fund.
Right, but do you, but it's just a question of of who has jurisdiction over it. I I'm very nervous about that.
Well, it states very clearly that they want jurisdiction.
I know that. But I'm saying it makes me uncomfortable.
I I I personally disagree, cause I think the two of them have showed.
That's fine.
Over the course of the last, since the start of this, I mean, they've hit this, you know. Profit on the head. They take, they've done an amazing job and who are we to sit here and second guess and make it. Extremely hard for them to have the lawn mowed.
Why wouldn't it be difficult? Because it wouldn't be like, well, they could do what they do. It's just that we would be able to see what they're doing.
Nobody's saying that we can't see.
Right, it's just, it's just, I think, I mean, just ask Brad, is this, this would be the only case or the only situation of something like that?
Well, not like sewer has cash on hand that they get interest on, but they have. Water doesn't, but water still owes the town some money. From back when, like ten years ago. It's down to like three hundred grand, but it's, you know, it used to be like two million dollars between water and stairs, that's come way down. It's kinda all over the place, Cynthia, to be honest.
Yeah, it's not a question of trust. It's not trusting. It's just the source of process goes.
It is. So Cynthia, are you asking them to then come to the Board of Finance every time they want to spend money out of their own account?
No, I'm asking them to request, request it just as a fiduciary transaction. Than not to have a different account in a different bank or even, they're not gonna check. It's not trust. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So but.
To come in and get permission to mow a lawn.
No, I'm not.
You sure?
I actually am not.
Me, it doesn't really matter which way we do it. Either way, what would happen if the Board of Finance approves, it's a transfer out of fund balance. Of three hundred and sixty.
Doesn't ask us every time they wanna mow a field, right? So they just carry on and do like Park and Rec, do what they do.
I don't think this is, let's get back to.
Yeah, we can talk about that some other time.
Well, we're gonna, I think we're gonna decide tonight, but we're not talking about, are we gonna do the three sixty-two? We're just talking about who's gonna get the interest. That's all, that's all really. As long as we all agree that we're gonna, that. I think that's the first question. I think we all are in favor of that money going towards reinvesting in the park.
Can I just finish my one thought? So no matter how this board, if this board decides to take from fund balance, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And give it to the F J Clark Fund. It goes on their books. Once it's on their books, it's overseen by the E D C. And then the E D C then falls under the Board of Selectmen. Um, cause it's not the general fund. This, because we're using fund balance, which is overseen by the Board of Finance. That's why the transfer here is there, but once this happens and they have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh it goes under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. Whether or not the, you guys, the board decides to put it in an interest-bearing account. Or to set it up as a pretty much an open line of credit up to three, either way, it's on their books of the three sixty. It's just a matter of whether or not this board wants to give it to them in cash or as a transfer. But either way, the control of that money goes to E D C and then overseen by the Board of Selectmen. Once this board decides to take. Fund balance and send it off to them. So really, it's.
That's fine.
It doesn't really give you any, by not giving them in the interest-bearing account, it really is no more oversight.
But this motion and and Dan, and and I know the first selectman did it, but this is um. Pretty solid that the the language in here, it's just for maintenance. They're not gonna buy a Corvette with it, if they have to maintain this park.
I didn't think they would be.
John loves when I say Corvette. He buys them all the time. It's not even funny. I've been carrying him for fifty-five years. Uh Will, did you have anything to add to this or? Where do you want the five percent to go?
To me, but. I'd rather stay with that.
That's D U F F, right? Thanks for the input there. I appreciate that. Someone wanna make a motion? And we'll see. Before somebody makes a motion, I think the consent, you should ask for a consensus if everybody's in favor. Somebody made a motion and then we'd we'd see the census if it passed or not.
I I will make a motion. That this Board of Finance approves as presented, the motion of the first select that we. Approve taking three hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents from the profit of the sales. Finish the string. Funding to be determined. I think to John's point, we'll figure out how to fund it.
So you wanna treat it two different motions? That's what, that's what I wanted to clear up. Oh, okay. I thought we were pretty good, um but we can do that. No, work on, he's got a motion in in. And we were gonna work on a second, was that your?
That that was the motion, Mary, just finish up the string, right, from the Board of Selectmen motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. So is there any, uh Dee, I know you're on mute, but is it?
I I I'm good with that motion. I do have a question about the five pers- about the interest. That can come after.
On this and then we'll go back to funding.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, so all in favor on funding uh the E D C out of the general fund for three sixty-two, blah, blah, blah. All in favor? At the record show that it's unanimous. Okay, so. Does someone wanna go back to discussion or or make a motion on this?
How about I make a motion that we set up the account that the E D C is in control of it. And will be made, however it needs to be worded, I'm sorry, I don't know the wording, that they'll be in control of the fund. And the interest-bearing portion of it. I'm looking for that motion.
So you have a motion. Does anybody wanna second that?
I'll second his motion.
Okay, so we have a a motion and a second. Any discussion on where the five percent? Dee, do you wanna jump in here?
Yeah, I I don't think I have a question on the five percent. I think that that is um additional money is that would be needed year over year for inflation costs and that kind of stuff. So that's not really my question. My question is more like if we want them to be able to. Like extend these funds by earning some percentage every year, right, and adding that to the balance. Um is there a way to do that, even if the monies are part of the general fund? Like, could we prorate the money that is earned? As part of that three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars or whatever it is. While it's in the general fund and just give them that percentage for, average percentage for the year.
That's interesting.
You could, it's not as clean, because then you gotta. Take that, you gotta take a percentage of whatever's in that account, you gotta look at, it's just math, and obviously, we can do the math on it. And then book that entry. It would just be a lot cleaner to just have it sit. If you want them to. Receive the benefits of having that cash on hand and have it be interest-bearing, it's just so much easier. We have a healthy fund balance. To just um move the money into this account. And then it's very easy for them to see, reporting-wise, how much cash is on hand.
But and so Brad, I think that makes sense. My only question is, would it actually save them a little bit of money not to start an extra bank account and have the fees associated with that?
The fees are minor because we, we have to keep a certain amount of our funds in non-interest-bearing accounts. To pay the analysis fees of having all these different bank accounts. So there really wouldn't be any fees with that account. It'd be there, it'd be borne by the account that is the non-interest-bearing account.
I gotcha.
We have to keep like fifty thousand dollars in non-interest-bearing accounts.
It's like a minimum balance.
Yes, but. My initial preference was really driven by a hope for simplicity. And simplicity in part comes from kind of just recurring processes. But I think what you're telling us, Brad, is. You know, this isn't gonna, by funding it directly to E D C. As opposed to doing something more like capital non-recurring. It's not gonna cause you any more work. You're not worried about controllership or any of that kind of stuff. Frankly, I'm agnostic. I just thought simplicity would drive, doing it like capital non-recurring, but if your advice to us is. It's a push from your perspective, then.
The um, the only difference for us is when Savvy books a monthly journal entry of all the inter- all the. Other bank accounts, the non-major accounts, she has had two other lines. Increase cash bucket against revenue of interest. It it's thirty seconds every month if it's in its own account. Um, the accounting system does the rest if it's just in a do-to-do fro-mo. It just, you know, so.
Oh, I I always thought it should be separate. I didn't like the idea of it being in the general fund, but at least it would be separate.
It'd be earmarked separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, so your way or the motion that John made, it's gonna be separate, but they're gonna benefit with with the interest.
When when I started twelve years ago, the town of Bethel had like forty-five bank accounts. Now we're down to like fifteen. Because we consolidated a lot of this stuff, but a lot of those were minor, or they didn't have really any money in it. We're just holding bank accounts to make more work for us.
Like the coffee machine.
E D C, or as we call it, Fund thirteen, F J Clark, having its own bank account is very minor, cause they already, you know.
And uh in uh first selectman came in and we obviously went with supporting that fund, okay? And now we're just debating about, should they get the extra interest? Maybe this thing prolongs a little bit further, kind of big thinking a little bit. Um and I think we're kinda going that way a little bit, it seems to be, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, I'm personally, we we've discussed it. I'm I'm very open-minded to, a- as long as to your point, it was something that made sense and it was simple. We could set it up. Yeah, I'm I'm all for it.
Right.
Um at the end of the day, you know, we could have done it two ways. We, by the way, we could have even decided instead of giving thirty. Three hundred and sixty thousand, then we just gave them so much per year.
Three hundred and sixty thousand, then we just gave them so much per year, a lot of ways because in this cap. By doing it this way and giving them something and saying, you know, we think it's gonna go up fifteen seventeen years. I'm all for it, and I think having an interest bearing account is fine. With me, um, but again, that was kind of a Board of Finance.
Yeah, and I just think it's a big thing that we're just not going back to the taxpayers, that we at least say, okay, here it is. Take care of it, please, and you know what I mean, and and we're not putting an increase on the taxpayer every year after year, you know what I mean? Or you could look at the EDC has been in control of this park for over thirty years.
Right.
Has done a great job creating jobs, creating taxes for the residents of Bethel, and I think they're gonna be responsible with the fund.
No, no, I'm not worried about the money, if I am, I mean, so, I mean, all by, all by that statement, I think that. You should move the question and.
Yeah, and just one more quick, if you if you have another minute, John. You're doing early morning. Come off, you know, who's carrying some of this money, I I I know the EDC, and again, not to go, it was going in the red for. Having Perryville County there or whoever, but is there money coming off of someone's budget, Park and Rec or Highway Department?
Um, so, a couple of years ago, when Park and Rec stopped mowing it, it was less work for them. But I think some of the reason it came off Park and Rec is. When Park and Rec mows town property every ten or so days. You know, and you know, you look at your lawn, at certain times, if you wait ten days, it looks bad.
Yeah.
Um, so Park and Rec mows. To a minimum, other than fields that need to be played on, um, and I think. So when it started, they started using it.
So there's no savings, but we're getting a better job in other parts of the town.
Yeah, savings is. It take a part timer, however long it took a part timer. Mow it over the summer, probably every ten to fourteen days.
Yeah.
And sometimes that's fine, and sometimes like this last year, it's not fine, but every fourteen days.
Correct. So John.
Yes. I don't know if you guys have even spoken of it. Eventually, we will have to come back and quit at two hundred and sixty one thousand.
Yeah, that's like a transfer.
Mention in every discussion that. That the board has considered it.
Just so everybody knows, it the 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 EDC has been running on a negative um, half a janitor's salary and. Half of the first select, it's kind of been all balled up and we're gonna clear that up with the sale of property, so it gets back to zero. Basically, the EDC owes the town the money, you know what I mean, so, but. It's just being transferred.
Well, it's also important, like I said now, because we're not, we're not giving them three hundred and sixty two thousand and they're just saying, you want us all that back?
We're going to zero and then giving them the three sixty two.
We're gonna get two sixty one back somehow, we're gonna write it off.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
I just wanna clarify one thing that. It was never in my in my intention to say that you were qualified or responsible to to. To whatever oversee the money, it was the same principle as well, we don't. And we don't tell Lisa, she has to ask us for paper clips if she wants to buy it, it's just it's a question of the overarching. That's what I was getting at, I'm all for it.
Excellent, so we have a motion and a second, uh, we'll try everybody's mind, all in favor on John's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Let's show unanimous, so we're gonna do fun and you're getting extra money.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mary, you had a good uh, understanding of what that motion was, that it's gonna go.
It's amazing, she can. Make you look good, trust me.
She'll weave that into a. Beautiful and poetic.
Thank you, everyone, alright, um, so. I guess we can do um, the transfers, or do you want to talk about any of your controllers?
We'll do the controllers report first, just because you added the. Uh, we're adding a controller.
Yeah, okay.
So revenue still looks amazing, we spoke, talked a lot about interest. Um, what was booked, when I finished the controllers report, we had four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars worth of interest. In five months versus a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't include at least another twenty two thousand of a statement that we received in the mail today that's for November. Um, so through November, we're over five hundred and ten thousand dollars in interest. Um, and the. Two lines down from that on this front page under use of money. We also have three hundred and two thousand dollars in change in future value in an investment account. That is growing, obviously, everybody knows right now it's a great time to have money. And it's a bad time to go out and get money. Uh, luckily, because the school locked up, not the school, the town locked up all the school debt. Before interest rates started going crazy, um. Thanks Bob Kozlowski and Bob Manfredo for pushing that through at that time is um. Town's in a great spot to create, have the cash.
Yep.
And we're not borrowing any, right? Um, revenue looks great. Um, property tax collection is down a little bit, but it's still. Um. In the ballpark, they hit her ninety eight six the last couple of years, Paul will tell you she hits over a hundred percent. Um. It's failing a little bit now, it's because of the. The prior year, even if you look at in the bottom right. Prior year, we budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in collections, we're at three seventeen, so fifty seven percent. Five twelfths of the way through the year, um. So everything's looking where it should be for that, um. Expense wise, I'm happy where everything is except for Park and Rec. But Park and Rec, we're gonna keep talking about not being happy where that looks right now until. They come back and we look at the either the two eighty five or whatever the number turns out to be after maintenance. Um, Rachel and I were working through that today more. Um, and they have a commission meeting tonight. Um, so hopefully for the January meeting, they will have a number that includes salaries, programs and everything else to come back to this board, but. Um.
There. And we're gonna estimate their revenue to be up and and it's kind of a wash, right, I mean, it it it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to see. Every month that they wait to come back to us, we get more data.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Lessons.
The, their revenue is still projected. Right now, like I think seventy five thousand dollars over through the first five months over what it was prior year at the same time. Um, and a lot of their revenue comes late in the year, because when camp gets booked in April. And camp revenue, they increased fees slightly this year to try to make. Because they saw what camp was actually costing them.
Hmm.
They increased the cost of camp, so their revenue is gonna be up, um. I project it's probably gonna be up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so over the budget. Um, obviously, there's other accounts where revenue is up. Um, so if we go back to a town meeting to adjust the budget, there are plenty of revenue spots to adjust. To offset the expense, whatever expense they're looking at, um, and we'll. When we have a final number from that, that'll be its own conversation of how the Board of Finance wants to handle making that adjustment. We know that we've already collected a million dollars in miscellaneous state revenue when we were budgeting two eighty three. And we don't get the two eighty three that we budgeted till like May. So that million dollars we have right there is gonna be a million dollars more than what we budgeted in that one line. Um.
But Park and Rec, real revenue because of the numbers that you keep getting is up seventy five thousand more than they. Thought it was gonna happen.
Over.
Over what they're saying.
Last year.
Timeline.
And last year, they collected eight fifty. So even if they just broke even the rest of the way, they're at like nine twenty five for the year versus a budget of seven fifty. So right now, without any additional camp revenue, camp just came in exactly what it was last year. They're at nine twenty five, so there's a hundred and seventy five of it there, um, so.
We're not gonna be far off, it's not like we're writing a check for three hundred, you know, there's more revenue coming.
Yeah, and I think. Um, it took the heart what Bob said at last meeting, and maybe we don't do, maybe we don't go from seven fifty to a million. For Park and Rec revenue, maybe we go seven fifty to nine hundred or nine fifty, knowing we have other revenue sources. Pick a hit for that year.
Oh, that might help the problem.
Yeah.
Just in case they don't come.
Yeah, you know, but we know. Um. Revenue wise, we should be good because of the additional state revenue.
Right, but you know, you guys have been trying to beat my head that you have to separate revenue. Right, and expenses, right, so, you know, when they, when they come here in February and show their budget, it's gonna look like it's up twenty five percent.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
This account, we we have to know that going into.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, there's no way of not, you know, their new spending is gonna be way up, you know what I mean?
Right.
So. Yeah, and so the. When we're in the budget, we talk about what the expenses are up percentage wise and dollar amount wise. Um, to me, dollar amount wise usually actually makes a lot more sense than percentage wise. Because it's budgets don't usually go down, um. But we also talk about what the mill rate does associated to it, so, um, so we'll look at all those pieces when we get there. So. Um. So that's what I have for the controller report, if anybody has a question.
Any other questions on the controller report?
We can make a motion to accept Brad's report.
We have a second. All in favor on Brad's report?
Aye.
Okay, last thing on agenda is the transfer. Um, and that um, was added there, so Brad, you wanna go over that?
Yeah, so this is, um, Nick, do you need a copy?
No.
I might explain Mary's, but I have a copy for it. Um, so, these are the same numbers we've been looking at for June thirtieth expenses. For the last four months, um, it just at the. Um, we're just at the point now that the audit is close. It's supposed to be due December thirty first, um, they're still waiting for pieces that are outside of. From us, um, they're still trying to get as many clients done as possible, so we're staying on top of them. Um, we've had some hiccups with water and sewer, closing that out because of some need, uh. When we updated the accounting system, which we had to. Uh, because they were sunsetting the old system that we were on, the old version we were on. Um, now the tax collector's having issues getting reporting out that she needs. Um, and just like our printing check issue, they're less than helpful depending on who you get. Um, so we're working through those problems and anytime that they request anything from us, we're on top of it, um. Sending stuff, I sent them stuff tonight because we're pushing as hard as we can. But the second they don't think that they can get us done by December thirty first, they move to a client that they think they can. Um, I know the Board of Ed has been sending them a ton of stuff this week, um. So we're working through it, either way, I didn't want a reason that we got pushed off their schedule. Be is because the Board of Finance hasn't approved year-end transfers, so finally today, I'm like. I'm I'm done waiting for them on it, let's just, we have a meeting tonight, let's put it in front of the board. These numbers haven't changed, as I spoke to Nick earlier today, if the. Audit had a minor change of a couple thousand dollars on one of these, I'm sure they would view that as immaterial and then we wouldn't come back to the board. If there was a major audit change, we would come back and have to approve that, um. So that's where we're at, um, I can go through where the department's at, but we've kind of talked ad nauseam about. What happened June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Twenty, yeah, twenty twenty three, um, obviously, the biggest ones are Park and Rec is over by three seventy one. Um, employee benefits are under by three fifty nine. Um. Lead is over by, I think, a hundred thousand or so, one thirty two. Highway come under seventy five, you know, like, there's some bigger swings in some of these, the professional services, which is legal, mostly legal. Is over by one forty seven, um, that, which we'll talk a lot about again during budget processes. We look at five year runs, ten year runs, fifteen year runs on some of those. And when we built out the twenty three budget, those runs said. Budget three oh nine for that account, you have a bad year and you're at four fifty seven. So, um, I haven't started doing that for, in December, all the department heads, including myself. Will put together their budgets, so when I start looking at legal services for the twenty five budget. That four fifty seven number is a real number out there, that now is gonna affect that average, but again. We try to budget on these things like with utilities of what the average is, um.
But if you were at three oh nine, you would, you you're not gonna say, oh, we really need four fifty now.
No, we look at the averages, we look at what's coming up, some of it, it's difficult, especially like take legal, right, so we're budgeting. I'm creating that budget in December, we're making adjustments with the first selectmen and the department heads in January. We're bringing that to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance in February. For the town to have a public hearing in March and a town meeting in April. So we start building it nineteen months out from the end of it. So we take what we know, but legal, all it takes is one thing to pop. And you have a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. Uh, so we'll look at it, um, we'll look at that account, it'll be a conversation with Dan too of. What do you know, what do I know?
What do you see coming?
Yeah, you know, so, but again, some of that is why we have a fund balance if we ever need to. Right, like I don't want to tax. The taxpayers on the worst case scenario of legal.
Right.
When we have some data that says. That's a worst case. And if there's, if we do have the worst case, we do have mechanisms to increase budgets if we need it to. Um, so, just kind of like we're talking about with what Park and Rec's going for right now, so our mechanisms to adjust the budget. In the middle of the year if we need to, and if that's what makes the most of it. Park and Rec's a different situation, but if something popped, we would know about it, you know, so.
So this forty three is going back in the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, so remember, you know, for the last six months, you were sweating and saying, man, I gotta find some money.
Yeah, I had hair when it started.
Right, no you didn't, I mean, but you you did pretty. But we did okay with some crazy numbers, we, you know, there was some health savings and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I remember that you, you know, you didn't look well a couple of days.
That might just be how I look. It was a lot of work to get to this forty three. You know.
Well, we're talking like eighteen thousand, so the gates open somewhere. Where was the gate opened up, you know what I mean, how how'd you get?
Where'd you find more savings, yeah?
We were, well, we were talking about fifty sixty, the difference between the sixty and the forty three. Is the claim for the bridge that was hit by the bucks.
Insurance company.
We still don't have resolution on it. I don't wanna put a fifteen thousand dollar, a possible fifteen thousand hole. In twenty twenty four, if I book it and then we have a fight. I'd rather not create a hole for ourselves in twenty four, over fifteen grand when we were able to make the.
Yeah, you made it, yeah, yeah.
So.
I think forty three thousand is a great number on an eighty nine thousand dollar budget that we overtaxed the town.
Yeah, I would rather gotten there in a different manner. I would rather in the last couple of years, we've had more room and we've dumped money into CNR.
Yeah, couple hundred thousand.
Right, but but we, well, we fund CNR in our budget.
Correct.
I mean, so, but it would be nice to do it two ways, but.
Yeah, but we do, when we have better years than this. We do have then the ability to fund a CNR, or now we have a tax stabilization fund. Um, which when this audit is done, because of what the revenue looks like, the revenue side of the twenty three fiscal year. Is to the good two million dollars. So at some point. Yeah, so I think the conversation with this board is gonna be, let's use some of that two million dollars and fund a tax stabilization fund. And we would have the ability, once we know what the twenty five budget looks like. By we, I mean the Board of Finance, and then at a town meeting, would have the ability to then use that. Five hundred thousand dollars to help taxpayers that got hit over the head last year.
It's a way of giving them a refund. It's simple.
Yeah.
Lighten the burden.
Yeah, a break probably more than a refund, but yeah.
Well, you know, right.
So, but we're not, we're not there yet, but those conversations are happening, I know Nick and I have talked about it, Dan and I have talked about it. Um. That is something that's on our mind of what's coming is that we will be looking at.
Coming down the road.
Ways to. Positively affect the mill rate, but also in a conservative, sustainable way.
Bob, I'm gonna lean on you here, I mean, you you see no problems doing this premature before the orders are done with their work and we're a couple thousand.
Thank you.
Um, someone wanna make a motion on that to approve that?
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the transfers as presented and proposed by the controller.
Excellent. We have a second by Cynthia, and a discussion on that, we all know what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, Dee, you're all good. Okay, John, all in favor on that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Can I, before you make a motion to adjourn, I just wanna, Mary and I were looking at. Possible days for budget presentations, just to make the board aware now and give you as much as possible. Um, Mary, at some point typically sends out a tentative schedule. Um, which I'm sure is on our brain to do. Uh, so right now, we're looking at presentations, which are joint meetings with the Board of Selectmen. For Tuesday, February sixth. Uh, Thursday, February eighth. And Tuesday, February thirteenth. Which would leave then one week later, Tuesday, the twentieth, the Board of Selectmen. Would be their first deliberation and possibly only if they only needed one night for it. And then the Board of Finance deliberations would fall on. Well, the presentation of the Board of Selectmen budget by the first selectman to the Board of Finance. Would be on February twenty seventh. Typically, the Board of Finance starts deliberating that night, and then we leave. February twenty ninth, that Thursday, as the if needed day for deliberations. Which gets us to a public hearing in mid to late March, and the. Annual town meeting right now is tentatively thought to be happening, uh, April fourth.